Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, May the 5th. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Andy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented minutes of the previous meeting dated April the 21st, 2014. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
With no corrections, comments, or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Approval of wastewater claims for Monday, May the 5th. We have three pages of claims in the amount of $38,108.98. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
None this evening, Mayor?
If there are no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated May the 5th, 2014, in the amount of $38,108.98.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. There is no unfinished business from the previous meetings. There is no new business tonight, or any miscellaneous business that the Board needs to hear. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, May the 5th, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Andy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented the minutes, printed minutes of the previous meeting dated April the 21st, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none this evening.
If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, you've been presented corporate claims dated May the 5th, 2014. Twenty-nine pages in the amount of $771,144.67. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I do have one question, please, if I may. On page seven, about three-fourths of the way down. It's, the amount is $393.75 for a refund of the rental room. Most of the refunds are $250. Why is it such an odd amount?
I don't know for sure what the difference is on this. I can find out. Sometimes it goes before the Parks Board, and if they have a large deposit, and there was a waiver of some type where they didn't refund all their fees. But for the most part, you're right, they're always $250. I do not know. I would have to some, find out what that's about.
Okay, thank you. That is my only question.
I have none.
No other questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated May the 5th, 2014, in the amount of $771,144.67.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Under unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting, we are ready to hear Resolution Number 5, 2014. And I will defer to legal counsel to very briefly discuss the Resolution Number 5.
Thank you, Mayor. Essentially, this, we had entered into an extensive discussion at the last meeting about this MOU with our injured firefighter, John Belay. And there were a couple of changes that were suggested, one being the hire date, the correct hire date, which we have in the revised MOU. And then there were some issues regarding, I think it was Paragraph 4, about the extent of the coverage. Otherwise, it's consistent with our conversations that we had at the last meeting.
Counsel, or Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
And by the way, this was ran past Aaron Janetti, the Union President, before it was submitted, so they're in agreement.
At this time, I will ask the Clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution Number 5, 2014 Memorandum of Understanding. This memorandum of understanding is between John Belay and the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. This MOU sets forth the understanding between Mr. Belay and the city as it pertains to insurance benefits upon his retirement from Beech Grove Fire Department. Whereas on March 27, 2000, Mr. Belay was hired by the city as a firefighter. Whereas on February 3rd, 2013, Mr. Belay sustained a work-related injury and went on disability leave. Whereas since his injury, Mr. Belay has received benefits and treatment through the Indiana Workers Compensation Act. Whereas, Mr. Belay's disability retirement date becomes effective on May 29, 2014. Whereas upon his retirement, Mr. Belay will receive benefits under the 1977 Police Officers and Firefighters Pension and Disability Fund. Whereas the city will provide Mr. Belay certain lifetime insurance benefits pursuant to Article 5 of the city's employee handbook. Now therefore, the city agrees to pay Mr. Belay the following benefits the remainder of his lifetime. One, the city shall pay 100% of Mr. Belay's premium for individual health insurance coverage at the current employee rate until he is eligible for Medicare benefits. Number two, the city shall pay 100% of Mr. Belay's premium for individual dental coverage at the current employee rate for a period of one year, two, and until May 28, 2015. Three, the city shall continue to pay premiums for individual life insurance of $10,000 as it does for all retired employees. The life insurance does not have a cash value. Four, the city shall pay 100% of Mr. Belay's deductible for family coverage should Mr. Belay participate in Health Savings Account. Any amounts paid by the city for the HSA shall be offset by monies paid to Mr. Belay to satisfy the deductible. The city shall issue a check to Mr. Belay for the balance of the deductible in January of each year. Five, Mr. Belay shall be responsible for the payment of the premium and deductible amount of any family coverage in addition to his individual coverage. Mr. Belay shall pay the employee rate for family coverage. Six, should Mr. Belay obtain his own health or dental insurance by other employment or otherwise, the city shall cease his individual and/or family coverage. And, seven, should Mr. Belay pre-decease his wife, and his wife has remarried, the city shall cease coverage of his wife and/or children. And witness whereof, the parties here too, have executed this MOU on the dates described
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 5, 2014.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries.
Mm-hmm. That resolution.
Oh, sure. Here it is. Oh. I haven't signed two of them, Dan.
Okay.
Yes, Aaron?
When do you want John to come in? Does he need to sign this too?
Well, we're going to sign two of them tonight, or these two, and we're going to give them to you to give to him to sign.
Okay.
And then bring one back.
Yes.
And thanks for your help on this.
Hey, no problem. Thank you for listening.
I'd just like to state, last meeting, there was some confusion as to the workers' compensation policy. So I contacted Doug Walker, Walker &amp; Associates, and he said, just for clarification purposes, his liability on the workman's comp is only for medical, and everything else is done through PERF. And this is done by state statute and by the choice of the fire department. That's, they chose to go through PERF rather than go through their part of the workman's comp. But I just wanted to clear that up because I think there was some confusion on that.
I want to also thank the Board members, the Clerk, and the Attorney, our Attorney, for putting this all together. This is very important, and it also sets precedent for, if God forbid, something happens in the future to another employee of the city. So thank you very much. If you could make sure Dan gets the one back.
I'm going to call him tonight, see if he'll come in tomorrow, and I can drop it off tomorrow.
Probably Wednesday would be better. Tomorrow's election day, so.
Sorry, I'm not waiting for all this.
He can, he can drop it off, it's just I won't be here.
Do need to vote.
Thank you. We'll move to new business. Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Indianapolis and Beech Grove Department of Public Works. And at this time, I'll call Mary Atkins from Westlaw to approach the podium and navigate us through this, please. Good evening, Mary.
Hi. Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple copies here to distribute. Do you all have copies, or no?
Bring them forward, please.
Oh, you do? Okay. I tabbed a place where I'm going to discuss a couple things. Okay, so just to give you some background on this, the City of Indianapolis has an MS-4 permit, and Beech Grove has an MS-4 permit. This is a permit that we've talked about, kind of, through the establishment of the Stormwater Utility. It's a state-issued permit. Indianapolis has a Phase 1 permit, and Beech Grove has a Phase 2 permit. Under the Phase 1 permit, IDEM is requiring the City of Indianapolis to set these memos of understanding, or I'm sorry, MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, with each of the other communities that are located within Marion County. So some of the other entities, Speedway, Lawrence, they're all developing these same sorts of memorandums. So if you want to flip to where the, I have it tabbed with a yellow tab at the top, this is Attachment B, and this is the entity. So Beech Grove is the entity in the situation, and the city is the City of Indianapolis, so that you're not confused when you're looking at this. But this Attachment B talks about basically what Beech Grove's responsibilities are in this memo of agreement. So it's kind of, it's kind of loose as to what the agreement is, and kind of the details will be worked out in future meetings. They want to establish a point of contact so that they can easily communicate, and that's Brad Meriwether is going to be the main point of contact. And then Mike Misani is the, there's a main point of contact at Indianapolis. So then, once a year, the two entities will get together and talk about how they can cooperate and just review this memo. There's, if they have to do additional meetings, we've agreed to meet with them additional times. To review, number four is to review spill prevention and response programs with the city, and establish notification procedures. So this is, in case there's some sort of a spill that crosses from Beech Grove into Indianapolis, or Indianapolis into Beech Grove, that everyone kind of understands what those responses are, just to help with spill control and spill prevention. Number five is a post-construction site runoff control, and then number six is construction site runoff control. And this is when there's new development, and they're going to be disturbing the land to build a new building, or, you know, build a new parking lot, that sort of a thing, that there are, there are parts of that development that require Indianapolis to review, and then there are parts that Beech Grove would review, and just to kind of work out who's doing what from that standpoint. And then review this memo annually, and make adjustments as needed, and, oh, make changes. So it's pretty loose as to what you're agreeing to. I don't know if you have any questions. I didn't want to go into too much detail. Brad Meriwether has met with the city and I, and then the Attorney has taken a look at it. So I don't know if you have any questions or anything else you'd like me to explain.
Board have questions for Mary?
No, the expert is worried. Settled it. It's beyond me.
Mary, thank you.
Yeah, and the City of Indianapolis has already signed this, and so it's up for your approval, and then we can help get a copy to them, so.
Okay. I'll defer to legal counsel for comment.
Yeah, we, Mary, Mary and I talked several times about this. We had, we went back and forth on a couple things, and I also talked to Brad, I think either by phone or email, but in any event, there was a vetting process on this, and I'm comfortable with it.
All right. Thank you. No other further questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Public Works of the Consolidated City of Indianapolis and Marion County and the City of Beech Grove.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Mary, is this something that you should carry back to Lori Meiser?
I can, if you'd like me to.
Ours, one of these, one of these are ours.
Yeah, keep one for yourself, and then I'll take one and mail it or send it to them.
Okay. Come on back up, please. Thank you very much. The next order of new business is stormwater billing agreement, and I'll defer to the Clerk Treasurer. Dan?
Okay. As everyone knows, on our sanitary sewers, we're going to be using Keystone. I believe they'll start on the next billing. On this will be our stormwater fee as well. So I'll just read the agreement. Thank you for your continued interest in Keystone Software System, and closes a quote for the key billing custom program. To purchase the quoted items, please submit a letter of intent or per order. You may quote as your letter of intent by doing the following, and it just tells you how to do that. The actual Keystone software program is to create a one-time import program to import the following from Excel spreadsheet based on account numbers. For total ERUs, if you give us the flat rate per ERU, we will multiply it by the total ERUs and populate the stormwater flat amount field and default the stormwater code with a 9 for each customer in the file. This cost is $600 to implement the stormwater onto the actual sewer bills that you'll be
Questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the agreement with Keystone and the City of Beech Grove Sewage Works.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye. And I'd also ask for a motion to allow the Clerk Treasurer to enter into agreement with Keystone pursuant to ERUs for stormwater.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Last order of new business is a permission to hire two part-time seasonal workers at DPW. Brad?
I am seeking approval to hire two part-time seasonal employees. The parameters would be, each person would have to be at least 18 years of age, make no more than $12 an hour, and we would cap their hours at 29 hours a week. We kind of got crippled by this last winter. Most of my guys accumulated a lot of comp time. I'm still kind of, I've got guys scheduled comp time throughout the rest of this year. So we're not only probably a little light on employees on a good day, but with that factored in for summer and then leave season, we just really need to start looking at bringing on a couple of part-time people, just to make sure we're able to get things done.
Questions from, comments from Board members?
Do you need for like vacation coverage as well?
What's?
Vacation coverage?
Yeah. I mean, at our current staffing levels, vacation, we kind of limit it to no more than two people off in a given day. Of course, you can't always plan for when someone calls in. But even now, and probably even with the, with the two additional part-time people, there's still times where we're pretty thin, but this definitely needs to happen, and then we can go from there later on as things pick up, or even in leave season. But the seasonal option is nice, because then if we do slow down in winter, and it's not quite as bad as last winter, hopefully, then we have the option of, you know, scaling back.
And there is money available in your budgets to do this?
Yep. Probably would pull one from MVH and one from sanitation, and split them up like that. So we do have enough in each budget to fund the rest of the year for each person.
And I think, are you not going to lose somebody here, Pierce?
Yeah, we have a current part-time employee who has been accepted by IFD, and he starts the academy in about three weeks, so we're going to be losing him about the time we'll be bringing these two guys on.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Let's have the Clerk read the letter into the record, please.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board that the city hire two part-time workers for seasonal employment at the Department of Public Works. Currently, the workload at DPW is increasing with summer approaching, and we are in need of additional personnel. The parameters will be that both positions will make no more than $12 per hour, work no more than 29 hours a week, and be at least 18 years of age. There is money in the MVH and sanitation budgets to fund these positions. Brad Meriwether.
Thank you, Dan. Motion to accept the Public Work Director's recommendation to hire two people.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thanks.
Chief, do you step forward, please? This is not on the agenda, but the Chief informed me prior to the meeting beginning that he has had a resignation within the fire department, and I think it would behave as to go ahead and move forward, and he could provide a letter later. Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, this evening, Chief Pierce was notified by Damon Fine that he is resigning. Damon is our recruit that is in the academy at this time. He was halfway through the process, and his resignation date would be Friday, May 2nd. So even though he is new, it just sets us back, and we would like to go ahead and proceed and hire Damon's replacement from our current list.
I don't generally, when I was fire chief, I didn't generally respond real quick when someone told me they were resigning. But it kind of rubs me wrong when we put out for a physical and put out for gear, and then within two months, the employee resigns.
Yes.
So I've been down that road, and I don't like it at all. It sets the city back, and it sets the fire department back. And, but we'll move on, and I would want you, I want him to give us a resignation letter so we can read it into the record. But I'll go ahead and ask the Board to allow, to allow the Chief to go ahead and proceed with replacing him.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. When he applied, was there a provision in his application that calls for reimbursement?
With Damon getting on IFD, we should be reimbursed by IFD because his physical through Public Safety Medical will fall within the last six months, so they will be able to purchase that physical from us.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes new business. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none tonight.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:27 PM. We will meet again on Monday, May the 19th. Thank you very much.
Yeah. At some point. I read over it again. That's the point she tried to make to me. I never.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Monday, May the 5th, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each councilman to introduce themselves.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Kathy Coast, Council at Large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several presentations this evening, and at this time, I'll ask the swim team to step forward for a plaque presentation. Come on right up here by the council chairs. For those in attendance, the Beech Grove High School Boy Swim Team won the Indiana Crossroads Conference Championship this year. I think it was back in February or March, is that right, Oscar?
Correct, February.
And January. And the city wants to recognize these athletes this evening with a plaque presentation. So Counselor Jennings?
The City of Beech Grove would like to congratulate the Beech Grove High School Boy Swim Team of 2014, the Indiana Crossroads Champions, signed by Mayor Dennis Buckley with the seal of Beech Grove, Lawrence. Congratulations, Oscar.
Thank you.
If you can introduce the, okay, Congress, if you can do that.
Okay, good evening. The, starting at the far end, is Sam Olrey, Chandler Ferrer, Villis Fushgallins, Patrick McKenzie, Michael Trebing, Caleb Bowser, Hunter Frich, Darius Hawk, Leo Castagna, Alan Mayer, and Levin Zimmerman. Not all the members are here, and Coach Wilder had some vehicle problems, and he couldn't make it either. For the seniors on the team, well, Alan Mayer's the only four-year senior that is here. He has been a part of the team the last four ye, or, I take that back, he didn't start swimming until his sophomore year. The seniors, we have won the conference the last four years, so hats off to all these boys. Thank you very much.
Oscar, could you? Could you introduce these, these folks right here?
Okay. Okay, and more specifically, in swimming, there are 12 events. The individual and relay conference champions, please step forward when your name is called. In the 200-yard medley relay, Alan Mayer, Willie Johnson is not here, Villis Fushgallins, and Chandler Ferrer. and Chandler Ferrer. And thank you, gentlemen, step back. In the 200-yard free, freestyle, Sam Olrey, conference champion, and thank you. The one-meter diving, Matt Havens, and Matt is not here. The 100-yard butterfly, Villis Fischgallens. The 500-yard freestyle, Sam Olrey. The 100-yard backstroke, Alan Mayer. And the 400-yard freestyle relay of Sam Olrey, Alan Mayer, Michael Trebing, and Villis Fischgallens.
Thank you. Now I'll ask the other coach to come up for a special presentation for Reese Johnson, please. Coach?
I want to hear Reese. Reese has calculated, or accumulated five school records in the year of 2013. She's been a phenomenal swimmer for sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, and so I'm really, really sad to see her go, and I've already given this speech a million times, and I've cried during one of them. She is by far the hardest worker I've ever seen in pool. I mean, I could give her a workout, and she just does it and does it flawlessly, and it always exceeds my expectations, so congratulations.
Can you read the, what she broke the school record in?
Oh, yeah. She has a school record in the fifty freestyle, the 100-yard freestyle, the 500-yard freestyle, the 100-yard backstroke, and 200 individual record, or just the individual.
Congratulations. And I would like to introduce, and we have wrestling champions as well. In the 106-pound class, Demonte Dawkins, sexual champion, come on up, please. 113-pound champion, Cody Conaway. 138-pound champion, Evan Smiley. Regional qualifiers, Demonte Dawkins, Cody Conaway, Evan Smiley, David Stonerock, and Nick Pleider. And semi-state qualifier, Demonte Dawkins. Congratulations, men.
Gentlemen, how you doing, David?
How are you?
Good. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice game the other night.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to proclamation for National Police Week 2014. Chief, can you step forward, please?
Do the windows open? The windows open?
I don't think so.
To recognize National Police Week 2014 and to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated officers of the City of Beech Grove. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded deaths in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Richard Ferguson, Tom Kleiss, and William Tony, who were members of the Beech Grove Police Department. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 26th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2014. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of a, is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 7th, or 11th through the 17th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, formally designate May the 11th to May the 17th as Police Week in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Chief, please accept this on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just want to say thank you and thanks to the council and the citizens. I accept this for all officers, especially Beech Grove and the three officers that we did have die in the line of duty. Thank you.
All right, chief, thank you. We have two other officers with us, Mr. Ferguson and Phil Smiley from the Indianapolis Police Department, so welcome to both of you, and we wish you nothing but good luck. Chief, Teshar? Also, we celebrate EMS Week proclamation to designate the week of May the 18th to the 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention, and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community. And whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas emergency medical respondents are supported by emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, educators, administrators, researchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the EMS teams, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, in recognition of this event, to hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to the 24th, 2014 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Dedicated for Life, I encourage the community to observe this week and join with me in thanking all of our emergency services workers. Chief, you accept this on behalf of the city?
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for your support for your fire department. This proclamation goes out to the men and women who are out there 24/7 every day working for you and the citizens of Beech Grove, and we thank you for your support, and thank you for supporting the public safety, the police department, and the fire department tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. This time, I will defer to Councilor Davidson to read a proclamation from our governor. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. State of Indiana Executive Department in Indianapolis, executive order proclamation to all who, to, to all who, whom these presents may come greetings. Whereas Indiana is a wonderfully diverse state full of destinations and attractions that can fit the need of almost any traveler. And whereas the recently announced Honest to Goodness Indiana Brand campaign is elevating Indiana's tourism industry unlike ever before. And whereas Indiana's visitors have contributed 7.7 billion to the state's GDP, supported over 186,000 jobs, generated over 2.1 billion in tax receipts, and paid 561 million in Indiana sales tax. And whereas tourism is Indiana's sixth-largest industry, directing employing 139,000 workers and directly paying wages of more than 3 billion. And whereas many counties and local visitor bureaus are holding special events and ceremonies this first full week of May. And whereas this week marks the kickoff to Indiana's popular spring and summer travel season. Now therefore, I, Michael R. Pence, Governor of the State of Indiana, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through 11th, 2014 as Visit Indiana Week in the State of Indiana, and I'll invite all citizens to duly note this occasion.
Thank you, council. That came across our desk today, and I'm sorry I did not get it on the agenda for this evening, so I appreciate you letting it be heard. We'll move to reading of minutes and approval. Councilor, you've been presented the printed minutes of the previous meeting dated April the 7th. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
Yes, Mayor, I have a correction on my statement towards the end. I had to read a email, which is a resignation letter, and basically I need to have that, put it in the record.
Can we do this by attachment? Can we attach a copy of the letter of which we are referring? Yes. I was going to ask if there's any, any other corrections or comments or questions concerning the minutes. Then I would ask a motion to approve the minutes for that attachment. I will make said motion.
I'll second.
Although-
I've got a question before you do this. This email was by a disgruntled employee who resigned from the city, and until something is proven that there was a problem there, I don't believe that it should go into the permanent minutes.
We're a vote.
Pardon me?
We're a vote.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as presented with the attachment. I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This time, we will do public comments. There are two people who spoke this evening, and I will defer to the city legal.
Thank you, Mayor. Gretchen Wirt. Ms. Wirt, will you please state your name and your address, and your organization, please?
Sure.
You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm, thank you. I'm Gretchen White with the Indiana Apartment Association. Our address is 9100 Keystone Crossing, Suite 725 in Indianapolis. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Indiana Apartment Association, which is a statewide trade association representing more than 215,000 professionally managed apartment units throughout the state, with more than 900 of those being in Beech Grove. I believe members of the council received a letter from Lynn Peterson, who is the president of the association, and I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions. It was in regards to ordinance number four, I believe, so.
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
I guess my, my question is in relationship to the ordinance number four, which talks about public nuisance and the generalities of the definitions of sounds and smells. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
What I had understood was that that ordinance was based upon other city and town ordinances. So why, I guess, I, could you be a little bit more clear on what your concern is with that for me?
Sure. IA is aware of another place that has a similar ordinance. However, those provisions haven't really been used, they haven't been enforced, and there's some concern about those provisions being enforced, and how fairly would they be enforced, I guess? Would they be, would it be consistent? Would it be, you know, there are just some thoughts about fair housing issues that could come into play, because you're basically asking the property owner or manager to take complete control over the noises and the smells, which could be open to interpretation. It seemed a little, a little vague, so we are aware of another place that has it. However, we don't believe they've ever enforced it, so our thinking was maybe, as you guys discuss this, asking if it's something that you guys really want to include or not include.
So, this is the first town that you've addressed or city that you've addressed concerned with? I mean, I, I just find it interesting, in my mind, I can't quite grasp. I understand your concern, and, and I would have some of those same concerns because that's a subjective map. But if other cities and towns have public nuisance ordinances, why, why now is it an issue for Beech Grove, I guess?
I think that those two particular provisions were brought to our attention as we are reviewing this, and we just, we recognize that, I believe they're in the town of Speedway in their ordinance currently. I'm not certain of the background on that in terms of whether or not the association said something or if they weren't aware of it when it happened, but as we reviewed this, it was just something where we kind of went, hmm. And then we asked some of our members who live in those areas, and they said that, to the best of their knowledge, it, they had never been enforced, and that it was something that did trouble them in terms of just making sure they were complying with everything, but some things can be open to interpretation and personal preference.
Right, I mean, and I understand that completely. I guess I'm just still, I'm, I don't know how you would ever define a smell or-
Right.
-a sound, I mean.
What's offensive to one person may not be offensive to another.
Cooking spices to one person might be an offensive smell to someone else, I mean, a certain variety, so.
Sure, and then we kind of get into a bind because we don't want to start, I mean, you know, when we screen tenants, we can't, you know.
Right.
There are lots of other fair housing and issues that come into play.
Exactly, exactly, okay. Well, I'm just trying to understand your, your position on that, and as legally, would that be up to interpretation by the judge?
Yeah, I mean, I can address, I'll be happy to address that when we have it on third reading, but I do have an interpretation on the ordinance. I mean, I, I looked at this ordinance extensively. It is something that the administration has been working on for the past six months, and we considered the constitutional ramifications of it, about some of the terms you're, you're addressing. You know, there's a notice provision where you have an opportunity to cure before you're cited, so I think a lot of that's addressed, but you have anything else, ma'am?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question. I met with the council president on this, and there was a suggestion about changing the title. I was interested in that. What is that? What was that for?
I think that a lot of the, under the, on page 2, 98.02, where it says the illustrative enumeration, I think a lot of those items, other than six and seven, go back to what a lot of people think of as being an environmental issue with the vegetation and those sorts of things, so they just weren't sure if it was your intent to do a public or an environmental nuisance.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Downey, we state your name, your address.
As my pen rolls off the podium. Angela Downey, and I'm speaking on behalf of Tori and the Ressler family.
And your address, ma'am?
350 North 14th Avenue.
Thank you.
And kind of in regards to what she mentioned in regards to, I guess, how it could be upheld or any type of court law, actually, it has been tried. There's actually a court case that I read today in regards to Spears versus Speedway, and Speedway was able to uphold that law, and there, they actually was able to keep the laws on the books and collect their fines and, and able to keep it going with, with no issues whatsoever. And since then, they've been able to decrease the crime statistics by minimum of 40 percent, and also at least a 2.65 percent appreciation of property values, where when the, before 2006, when they implemented it, they were seeing a negative appreciation on property values, and that was during the mortgage boom. That's when everybody was refinancing, and that's when everybody's property values were skyrocketing. They were in the negative. Now, since they've implemented this, they've actually seen a nice steady 2.65 percent appreciation across the board, and there are 53 percent non-owner occupied properties in their area. As to where Beech Grove's about 43 percent. So since they've done this, they've seen a huge gain in their revenues by being able to collect these fines for these ordinances. They've also seen their standard of living in their neighborhoods increase because people are happier, they've, they've had better experiences, and people aren't afraid to go there anymore. We're not picking on the landlords. We're not trying to make it impossible for you guys to do business. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to make you- What we're trying to do is, we're trying to make you be fiscally and financially responsible for who you want to make our neighbors. That's all. And by doing this, we want to also maybe put some money back into Beech Grove by collecting on these fees or ordinances if we aren't able to. Because I can almost guarantee you, if you have to pay those fines once, twice, well, definitely after three times, you're not going to want to pay them again, and you are going to make those better decisions on who you put in those apartments or homes and who you make our neighbors. And make sure we live by people that want to be good Beech Grove neighbors. That's all I really had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Those are the only two citizens who signed up to speak this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who did not sign up that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, will you please state your name?
And council persons for the opportunities to...
Sir, will you please state your name and your address?
Bill Carpenter, 63 South 7th Avenue, Beech Grove.
Thank you.
It's an honor to stand before you and address you council people. I know the responsibilities you have, and they are challenging at times, boring at others, and so forth, so on. But today, I just wanted to address this general ordinance, number four, that you have understand passed in the first reading. I'd like to ask a question or two. Number one, this ordinance applies to every house in the city. Is that correct?
And business.
And business. So no rental property is singled out, no more than homeowners? So it applies across the board evenly?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Thank you. The next question I have, have you read the ordinance?
Several times.
Several times, okay. Well, that's important.
The next question I have, are you aware that the metropolitan Indianapolis has the same system in place where it goes by and checks on properties and does inspection and writes up citations, just similar to this? Are you aware of that? Could I ask this question? Then why do you, as a council, want to spend money to duplicate something that's already in force? Why do you want to take, how much money do you expect this to cost? Say, $50,000, $60,000 for inspectors, maybe? I don't know what you're paying them. Why does the council want to reinvent the wheel? If somebody could address that to me.
Hope for one, being an excluded city, we should be independent from the city of Indianapolis and/or the county, is what you're referring to.
You should be excluded from Indianapolis's governing ship?
Take care of our own.
Well, I can attest that for 30 years or more, I've lived in the city, and I've seen citations written up by the city, by inspectors from the Metropolitan Board of Inspections, and they have come by and written up properties, and I've seen their citations. And I thought that was being done quite well in the city of Beech Grove. And it used to be, years ago, that argument was that they couldn't get them to do it. But I know that that is a false claim, because they will do it. All you have to do, if you've got a property that's a nuisance, you just call them, and you go and tell them what the, you don't even have to give your name. And they will, they will come by and cite the property if it has violations. So I'm just wondering why, you know, and I don't think that that's fully, Councilman Bell, a proper interpretation. You want to be totally out from under control of Indianapolis laws and supervision, because we are a part of the Marion County. And that's, that's under the Marion County Health and Property. They do have the right, they do come in, and they do that.
Right.
So I'll say this, I don't see any real problem. I'm not opposed to dirty, I'm not for dirty water or dirty properties or unclean lots. That's something I'm not in favor of, and I don't think anybody is. But I just hope that this ordinance will be administered evenly, compassionately, properly, without any targeting. And I've been before administrative judges down in the metropolitan, the Marion County Health and Hospital, and I've seen little old men and could hardly get around, and they had some brush in their yard, and they couldn't pick it up. They didn't have, their explanation was, "We don't have money, sir. I'm only on social security." And I felt so sorry for them that I even went and got the dad dress and the name of the person. But I just want to say, as a citizen of Beech Grove, I'm in favor of clean properties, but I'm not in favor of spending unnecessary money that you and I don't have to waste when we've got in place, we've got laws, inspectors, that do the same thing that you're asking this to be done. And I would appeal to you. Think about that. If it was your money, would you spend it? If it was coming out of your pocket, would you?
It is.
Pay for it?
It is coming out of your pocket.
Not, not literally coming, you're paying taxes, but it can, what's coming out of our pocket could be used somewhere maybe a little better. That's the point I'm trying to get at.
Thank you.
Bill? Thank you. I know that you and Mary had come into the office at least twice to discuss this ordinance, and I appreciate your input and your professionalism.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have a desire to speak before we move on? If not, we'll go to committee reports. We have, I have asked the committee heads to submit their report via email, but I will defer to the clerk to read the financial report.
Dear councilors, this evening, I have three transfer requests that were enclosed in your packets. The first two requests are for the Safe Sidewalks grant. We budgeted for it, and we just need to transfer money into the 203 fund that has been set up for this grant. The school has already paid to the city their portion of the grant for $76,920. I am certain the city will have to transfer more monies into this fund later in the year. I will wait until it is complete before I come before the council for permission to transfer the monies for the outstanding balance. The third request for the road signs grant, we budgeted for this and also need to transfer money into the 205 fund that has been set up for this grant. Additional funds may need to be transferred for this project, but we will not know that other project is complete, at which time I will come before the council for permission to transfer monies if needed for the outstanding balance. The fourth request is transfer money from unemployment and the Board of Works to the professional services in the Board of Works budget to fund the costs of the IT updates that we have incurred. Main Street project, we still have not received our last invoice from Crossroads on the project. This is not uncommon, as we received invoices for the roundabout into late 2012. Currently, the fund has a negative balance of $34,511.69. There is an outstanding balance from sewage that is owed to corporate for the project. And when all the claims have been submitted, I will do a final evaluation and come before the council to ask for permission to transfer the balance of the funds due from sewage to corporate. In addition, the Indiana Department of Transportation has also changed the process of payment on the project. Claims number one through 17, they paid us 30% of the claim amount upfront, and we would then add our 20% and pay the invoices in full. Since claim 18, we now have to pay the invoice in full in advance, submit a claim along with a copy of the canceled check to the NDOT before we receive their payment for their 80% portion that is due to us. Regarding general ordinance number one, I have a couple of questions. I have created fund number 207 Beech Grove Public Safety Program. This will make it easier for both Chief Schwartz and me to track the monies, because they will remain separate per the ordinance. He will issue a transfer request monthly to transfer funds into the 101 for overtime that he wants appropriated to the program. The ordinance specifically asks for the overtime to be included in the police department budget as an additional line item. So the money will be received into the 207 fund and, upon the chief's request, will be transferred into the police department budget. The deferrals that come in from Beech Grove City Court for the city of Beech Grove have always been received into the LLE fund. So we transferred 25% of the deferral money that has been received in thus far this year to fund number 207. However, after reading the ordinance again, I realize it states monies collected from the Beech Grove Safe Driver Program. I need clarification on where the funding is supposed to be coming from and if it is to come from the Beech Grove Safe Driver Program. Where are the monies for this program now, and how will we receive these monies from it? Bank statement errors. When reviewing the bank statements, you will see four transfers in a row made by me from the Main Street revolving loan account into the corporate account. Since I will have to provide the auditors with an explanation, I also felt I should provide the council with one. In March, we had a new employee who, in error, deposited corporate money into the Main Street account. Three of the four deposits occurred the last week of March when I was on vacation. Their has been corrected, and all monies have been transferred into the correct accounts. The city website continues to be a success and is provided at no cost to the taxpayer. We continue to have wonderful volunteers to assist with the updating and posting. We have two community-related informational pages available. If you have any community events that you would like posted, please email me, and we will get them up there as quickly as possible. The community event page and the community news page. The financial reports, city dead schedules, bank statements, or more are all available online at www.beechgrove.com. The balances are online and have been provided this evening for the council.
Questions for the clerk? If not, we'll move to unfinished business. First order of unfinished business is general ordinance number two, 2014, is up for third and final reading this evening. And at this time, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. And I'll ask the clerk to read general ordinance number two, 2014, by title only, please.
General ordinance number two, 2014, an ordinance to amend Title V, Public Works, Chapter 50, Sewers, of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, to establish policies and procedures for the stormwater utility and a stormwater user fee.
Thank you, clerk. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number two, 2014, on third and final reading.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have an amendment I'd like to do. Under 5002, stormwater use fees, it bumps from 2014 to 2016, 2017, 2018. I think we all know what that's about. It's, 2015's an election year, so I think we need to bump that up to 2015. I mean, we're putting it through, we shouldn't be ashamed of, you know, what we put through. So effective August 1st, 2014, it should go then to effective January 1st, 2015, and so on through 2017. That's my amendment.
Before I ask for a second, the reason why it didn't bump up is because we're only collecting three months, and then we would bump it up. So we go from $1.50, and then three months later, we raise it. I would rather keep it at $1.50 for 15 months instead of three months. So I would ask that you defeat that. There's a motion on the floor, I need a second. Second? Fails by not getting a second. Motion to approve general ordinance number two, 2014, on third and final reading.
Make said motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Passes four to one. Please register your vote. General ordinance number three, 2014, is up for second reading this evening, and at this time, I will defer to Councilor Davidson. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, before we start, actually, I guess I'll go ahead and read it. General ordinance number three, 2014, is an ordinance amending Chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana pursuant to animals. And I'd also have an amendment, which I place before each of the council members as well.
Do you want to read the amendment?
I'll read it.
Do we need to read it again?
Yeah, I'll have him read the amendment into the record, please.
Okay. The, I'd like to amend the following, 90, section 90.08, and it should be read as such. It shall be unlawful for any person to harbor upon his or her premises or within the corporate limits of the city of Beech Grove any cattle, swine, horses, ponies, poultry, or domestic farm animal, with the exception of a pot-bellied pig. The keeping of the animals is hereby found determined to be a public nuisance and a menace to health, safety, and welfare of the city of Beech Grove. Next amendment is 90 point, you want to do them separate or all together?
No, all together. We'll do them all together.
90.10, amend A, it shall be unlawful for any person to dispose of or throw away any carcass, dead animal, animal blood, or parts of any carcass upon any street, alley, or public place, or upon any private lot within the city. I apologize for the nature of the language. 90.16, Section D, unrestrained dogs or cats may be taken from police or the humane officer and impounded in an animal shelter, and they are confined in a humane manner. Impounded dogs and cats shall be kept for not less than five days unless reclaimed by their owner. Dogs and cats not claimed by their owner within five days or placed in a suitable new home shall be humanely euthanized by the Indianapolis Animal Care and Control delegated to him or her to exercise that authority. Also amend 90.99, subsection C, the owner of any animal found at large or in violation of any provision of this chapter shall be punished by fines with respect to each animal as follows. A, first offense, $25. B, second offense, within six months, $75. And C, subsequent offenses within six months, $150. I'd also like to remove subsection, or section 90.07, or 90.17, sorry.
There's an amendment to general ordinance number three, 2014. I need a second, please.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to clarify. So if we pass this ordinance, we will be doing away with the clerk having to screw with the dog tags or tags altogether?
Correct. With the exception of the dog park. Well, dog park passes, but as far as tags goes, no.
I got a question on that. What about the people that have already paid for this year? Are you going to refund them money?
I guess you would have to prorate it.
How much is that?
I think it's $2.
$2 at the most, you're talking 50 cents.
Well, could we just make this effective anywhere? I mean...
That's what I'd do, but that'd be common sense.
I would amend that on third reading.
Okay.
There is an amendment to general ordinance number three, and I need a second, please.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That votes to amend the ordinance. Now I'm asking for a motion to... Now I'm asking for a motion to, uh, waive the rule, uh, rules and read by title only.
I'll make said motion as amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll have the clerk read it into the record.
General Ordinance Number Three, Twenty Fourteen is an ordinance amending Chapter Ninety of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana pursuant to animals.
General Ordinance Number Three, Two Thousand Fourteen is up for third and final reading. I need him... Second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Passes five to nothing. We will hear it on third and final reading at the June Second meeting. General Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Fourteen is up for second reading only this evening. I'll ask for a motion to, before I do that, is there any amendments being brought forward? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Four, uh, excuse me, to waive the rules to read General Ordinance Four, Two Thousand Fourteen by title only.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll have the clerk read General Ordinance Number Four into the record.
General Ordinance Number Four, Twenty Fourteen is an ordinance that amends Chapter Ninety Eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove pursuant to public and environmental nuisances.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Fourteen on second reading only.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Nay.
Passes four to one. We will hear it on third and final reading at the June Second meeting. General Ordinance Number Five, Two Thousand And Fourteen is up for second reading only. And I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Five, Twenty Fourteen is an additional appropriation ordinance concerning LRS and MVH categories of the Twenty Fourteen budget.
No, entire ordinance.
Okay, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council, the Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expense of the taxing unit that the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Local roads and streets, forty thousand dollars. Total local roads and street fund, forty thousand dollars. Motor vehicle highway capital outlays, forty-two thousand dollars. Total motor, total motor vehicle highway fund, forty-two thousand dollars. Therefore be it further ordained that fifteen thousand of court revenue be allocated to the LRS fund from the general fund to support the requested appropriation for the LRS fund. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Five, Two Thousand Fourteen, I need a motion to approve on second reading, please.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll carry over to third and final reading at the June Second meeting. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, I'll defer to the clerk for, uh, additional proper, or transfer of funds. Ben?
Okay. Uh, counsel, I sent a, uh, transfer sheet in your packets and I made you new ones this evening. There's one correction under the transfer for forty thousand seven seventy-nine from the MVH road sign. On there, on the final end of that, I put Two Oh One Nine Hundred and it should be Two Oh Five Nine Hundred. So I wanted you to be aware of that. Dear counselors, I am asking for approval to make the following transfers. These transfers do not increase the budget but are just corrections to the budget. Transfer sixty-one thousand in appropriations from MVH sidewalks paving to safe sidewalks grant. Transfer nine thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars in appropriations from LRS sidewalks to safe sidewalks grant. Transfer forty thousand seven seventy-nine from MVH road signs to the road signs grant. Transfer nineteen thousand from Board of Works Unemployment Compensation to Board of Works Professional Services. This is for the IT updates.
Questions or comments from council members?
I just, I, I have a question. Is there any reason why it wasn't on the agenda?
I have no idea.
Um, I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Generally, sometimes we do this when they do the financial report.
It was in the packet.
Right, it was in the packet.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask to, uh, do a approval, all as one, please. Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Move on to Redevelopment Commission appointment and I will defer to the council president.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, we have a position that is open on the RDC. From the last meeting, we had two individuals, uh, that asked their name to be put in. Mac Velmer and Rick Greenfield. Uh, Rick Greenfield is currently on the BZA. And if he is chosen, I, he would resign. Do we have any other names to be put on the board tonight? For consideration? Not hearing any. I'll bring up the names and...
Are either of them here?
No, Rick was supposed to be here this evening, I'm not sure where he's at. Mac is not here either?
No.
All right. You want to go ahead, go forward, or refer to the next?
Pardon me?
Would you like to do it tonight or refer to the next meeting? For the vote?
I prefer they be here so they could speak to me.
Exactly. I, I second.
I agree. So we'll...
We table this for a meeting?
Absolutely, yes. It's up to you folks.
I make a motion, we table this till next meeting when we have both gentlemen here.
Second.
Second. Mac's a lady, isn't she?
Yes, yes, she is.
Just wanted to put that out there.
Oh, say aye?
Aye.
Tabled.
Thank you, mayor.
That concludes, um, all of that portion of the meeting. We have two new ordinances I want to introduce tonight on first reading. First one is General Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand Fourteen, and it amends the Employee Handbook pursuant to drug-free workplace. And the reason I brought this forward, I gave it to you about a week ago to look at it. This is one policy that is come, is coming down from the federal government when pursuant to, uh, obtaining federal funds. Uh, the city has to show that it is a drug-free workplace. Uh, so therefore, they presented this ordinance to me. I run into this with, uh, the Orca Grant for a new fire engine. We were not really technically eligible for that due to an ordinance like this not being in place. Uh, and I'm pursuing some more federal funding for sidewalks and I'm asking this evening to, uh, have the council hear this on first reading and approve it. So, uh, I'll open the floor up for questions or comments.
Would anybody prefer that it be a drug-filled workplace?
Yes, Kathy?
Is this pre-employment? I mean, we did a drug...
No, I got tabled.
Okay.
This is for current employees.
Okay, and it, it's only, I guess I'm confused because I thought we, we had this discussion.
No, you folks approved drug testing for pre-employment. This is for current employees.
So everybody's going to have to go back and get, no?
No.
Well then, help me out. I'm sorry.
This, this ordinance is telling everybody that the council desires a drug-free workplace.
Yeah.
That's what this is about.
Okay. There's no...
No testing.
Oh, it's just a no tolerance.
Yeah, there's no ramp, ice, testing, it's the same weed.
It is, it's what we believe in.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I would like to hear it on first reading. The police chief is going to ask for an amendment when we hear it on second reading.
My motion, we accept, pardon me, go ahead.
But what I would like to do is, uh, I'd like to get a motion to waive the rules and read it by title only on first reading, please.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. And then I will have the clerk read it into the ordinance all the way down to where it says Section Four, Dan.
All right. General Ordinance Number Six, Twenty Fourteen is an ordinance that amends Article Fourteen Employee Behavior, Section Four in the Employee Handbook. Whereas the City of Beach Grove, Indiana makes a commitment to provide employees a safe working environment to ensure that employees, equipment, and operating practices comply with health and safety standards and to maintain public confidence in the city and its employees. Since the city values each employee, the city offers employees assistance in dealing with alcohol and drug abuse programs. Whereas the city requires all employees to report for work in a condition that allows them to perform their duties in a safe and efficient manner. Employees will not be permitted to work under the influence of alcohol or with prohibited drugs in their system thereby affecting job performance. Whereas violation of any provision of this ordinance will be considered just cause for disciplinary action up to and may include discharge even for a first offense. In addition, refusal to adhere to any part of the policy may be considered an act of insubordination and also may lead to disciplinary action up to and may include discharge. Whereas this ordinance complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act as amended, Forty-Two U.S.C., Twelve One Oh One, S Squid. Whereas, this ordinance and related procedures may be modified by the city at any time in order to comply with any applicable federal, state, and local laws or to better serve the needs of the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Article Fourteen Employee or Behavior, Section Four of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendment take place. Delete Article Fourteen, Section Four in its entirety and replace with the following.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand And Fourteen on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will carry this over to the second reading on the June Second meeting. Thank you, counsel. General Ordinance Number Seven, Two Thousand Fourteen is a new ordinance. It is, uh, counsel, it's a licensing ordinance and it's also a compliance ordinance. It has to do with hotels, motels, and places of lodging. Uh, the city of Beach Grove has three motels. Motel Six, Super Eight, and La Quinta. Uh, the Red Roof and the Holiday Inn Express is not in the city of Beach Grove. All of those hotels around us are licensed by the city of Indianapolis. Uh, the city, or the three hotels in Beach Grove currently are not governed. There is no governing body that oversees licensing of these hotels, motels. So anything goes. And what I would like the council to do, um, is to approve this ordinance so the city can begin the process to license these three motels, hotels, or any future place of lodging in the city of Beach Grove. And if they do not play by the rules and are not subject to, do not approve inspections, then the city of Beach Grove will have the authority to close these, uh, motels. Early, Mr. Carpenter, earlier Mr. Carpe talked about, um, code enforcement coming out here and why are we doing this when code enforcement will come out? Believe it or not, code enforcement will not come out to the hotels in Beach Grove because it is not within their jurisdiction. We ran into this problem last year because the police were screaming for help because of all the problems at Motel Six. And I'll defer to counsel on that for further, uh, further thoughts.
Yeah, we, um, there is a particular hotel in the community that, uh, we, our police get an inordinate amount of runs, uh, for criminal activity. And at the time, uh, we just, we did, we're trying to figure out what we were supposed to do about this. So we called code enforcement and Indianapolis Code Enforcement and what they told us was, is that, um, we're an excluded city and we'll tell you the same thing we're going to tell Speedway in Lawrence and Southport. If you, if you're an excluded city, we're going to exclude you and we're not going to provide you these types of services. Um, we contacted the Board of Health and, uh, essentially we got the same response. So this is not something, uh, this is something, this is, it's necessary. It's, it's a, it's an issue that, um, I think that the community knew all the facts about what the type of runs that our police are getting at these, in particular, one particular motel, that, um, it's, it's a need that we need to address.
I would like for the police chief to come up very briefly and, and take you through the three, uh, motels that we're talking about and give you some insight on what's actually going on there every day. Chief?
Good evening, I, as the counselor told you, we, the police department, we have problems, especially at one of the motels. To give you a little down, a little run-in, twenty twelve, we had three hundred and eighteen runs to the three motels. Twenty thirteen, we had four hundred and eighty-one runs. These runs are various from, uh, drug activity, uh, trouble with people fighting, vandalism, theft. And twenty fourteen, so far in the three months that we've done it, January, February, and March, we've had eighty-eight runs. This is a taxing thing on our police department. It, on these type of runs that we go to, at least two officers. When you have three or four officers on a shift, you're taking all of them or half the shift. It's busy and we would appreciate some help in trying to alleviate this problem. And it's, uh, just last week, we had a run down to one of the motels. We recovered more than ten pounds of marijuana, more than three thousand dollars. But one of the, the big things we recovered was two weapons. So we're dealing with drugs and weapons at these motels now. With this ordinance, I think that it will help make, uh, safer for the police, safer for the citizens, and for those that come in that want to use the motel.
How will this help you?
This will give the city the right to punish the hotel that doesn't make good citizens out of the residents. It's, they rent to whoever will pay. And if they're responsible, who they rent to, maybe they will stop giving it to anybody. There are certain clientele that go to the motels, they know who they are, and we would like to have that stopped. We deal with the law enforcement as needed, but we continue to run on them. Like last year, four hundred and fifty-one runs. And it's basically the, the three major types. We have drugs, theft, and vandalism or larcenies.
So are some of these people staying quite a while?
Yes, we have residents there that they, they come in, cause problems, and as long as they're paying for their room, that's all the motel seems to care about. They tell us they, they don't like them there, but they keep letting them come back.
And chief, I can actually attest to that as well. Uh, one of the nights that I rode, uh, with one of your officers in, on the night shift on a Friday night, we responded there twice. Both of them were drug-related.
Yes.
So is it true that currently, if you find something, then you can arrest the person that's engaged in whatever activity, but the hotel itself is not in any way at...
The hotel, as far as to the city, the hotel's not liable for what they do.
And this would make that...
This would, yes.
Okay, and then we force it through our... Okay, and then we enforce it through our court?
Yes.
Are there penalties or fees associated with any of this stuff, or is it more?
When the hotel or motel applies for a license, they have to pay a hundred dollar fee, plus they have to pay a room fee of ten dollars per room, and that is annually.
Every year, okay.
And then the clerk has the right not to reissue a license.
Gotcha.
And that's based on inspection. But anytime during the course of the year, when these police officers go over there, that becomes a common nuisance. And then you can enforce the rules, you can close them that way or fine them that way through the city court, or the city has the authority to take their license away and close them. And that's what we need. We don't have any leverage right now, and the city needs leverage. And look at it this way, Kathy, how about somebody traveling through town and wants to stop for the night, you know?
I, oh, I agree.
You know, so here we go. I wanna have the chief come up. Where's Rob? Very briefly, then we'll move forward.
Mayor and council, like Mark stated, there's been a significant increase of overdose runs at these motels. And how that impacts the fire department is, these are very, I'll call them labor-intensive runs because you're dealing with an overdose. You're dealing with people who really don't care about our own safety either. So when we have to transport the overdose patient to the hospital, it takes extra manpower. So basically, we're taking ambulance and engine out of service for transport. And those transports from dispatch to back in service is over an hour. That's a lot of man-hours being taken out of service where the ambulance and engine is not here within the city to respond to the rest of the citizens' needs. So it is a burden on us also.
Is this, is there any way we could, I mean, not, not that I'm against it, because I'm not, but like to show for people who wanna see the financial impact. Remember back the other hotel that used to be there before Lowe's and Walmart, and we had the same kinds of issues with that? Is, is there any, like, any way to show how that reduced runs? Or I, I don't know what I'm trying to ask you, but I'm trying to, for people who like numbers.
Yeah, I, I think like what Mark said, and Mark stated his numbers have dramatically increased. If you look at the increase in runs to those areas, plus the man-hour spent by the police and fire department combined, it's, it's very taxing on the public safety of the city.
You know what I'm saying, Mark?
Yeah.
I think I understand what your. Like Rob said, and the mayor said, that this is a taxing on our services, and if we can get it under control, if we control the motel and tell them, be a good citizen, otherwise we can punish you financially. We can take your resident away for the night, the court will release them, they go back. They can do it over and over, day after day, which, four hundred and fifty-one runs in one year, it's more than one a day.
Right.
So, Rob, if your, if your ambulance has to go out there, do you charge anybody for that?
Yes, they do receive a bill, but being paid for that ambulance run is a totally different story also.
I guess I just want the city or the citizens to see.
Send them the corrections.
It is possible, money, whether we feel it, I mean, I mean, we obviously feel it as a city, but like you, I might not every day go, man, that place is costing me fifty bucks a day or whatever, but there, I wish that there would be something that we could do just to help people.
We go to the scene of a hotel motel, and I travel also. If I go to a motel and I see two or three police cars, four or five, and they're taking people wearing handcuffs, I'll drive to another one. I'm not gonna stay in that one. And I think that's what you can, you will see, and you do see in these motels. It's.
Well, and that's a good location off the.
It's a very popular location.
A good stopping.
Has there been any prostitution yet?
Yes, that's, it's not as common or caught as easily.
I just, I wanted to throw that in.
It is.
Really?
With the drugs and the money and the guns, you, you get some of that.
Lawrence passed a very similar ordinance, and I talked to their city attorney about this time last year, and, and they've had some success in, in alleviating some of the issues that the chief has discussed.
Once they implemented, implemented this, how quickly could the hotels get registered?
I think we'd have to do it on an annual basis, it's probably, I, it's something.
I'm noticing in here, it says we're gonna start on January first.
Yeah, right.
Is there any way we can expedite that? Can we go ninety days?
I, I mean, I think that's a, that's a bookkeeping issue. We don't wanna create an administrative nightmare for the clerk, but I think it's, I, that's, that's.
I think it gives them ample time to be ready.
Yes, that too.
I don't know if it would be fair to assess some fees in, in August and then turn around and do it again in, in January.
I would be okay with them not paying the annual fee, but once they go on record, once they know that they are now being, it's being logged, and you're not gonna get registered if you fail this, just.
And, and lots of budget for these types of things too, so like Mayor said, it's, it's, it's a budgeting, so.
Maybe our fee's not high enough.
I think it's consistent with what Marion County does, isn't it? Or the city?
The fee amount is consistent with?
No, ours is a little bit lower.
Is it a little bit lower?
Marion County and Speedway and Lawrence is twenty-five dollars per room. Ours is ten. You can make it twenty-five if you'd like, you can amend the ordinance.
This is a good start, in my opinion.
Any other questions from council members? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand and fourteen, on first reading only.
I'll said, I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Passes on first reading, we'll hear it on second reading only on June the second. That concludes new business this evening, and before we go to council comments, last week, I was informed by Councilor Mobley that he was found guilty of soliciting a prostitute on Washington Street. Once again, I had put out a statement about, as I did in two thousand and twelve, about accepting his resignation. He has not done that, and he has explained to me that he has no desire to do so. And I didn't wanna comment too soon because I wanted to explore all of our possible legal remedies to, for this matter. So I, I know that our attorney has contacted the Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, and it has done some expansive research on this, and now I wanna defer to him for guidance for you folks. Craig?
Thank you, mayor. I'm not here to pass judgment on Mr. Mobley, the court is responsible for that, but I will tell you that there, there are several instances under Indiana law where an elected official can be removed. The first one is by operation of law, if somebody is convicted of a felony, they're removed from office, period, that's the end of story. The second way is, is that if a judge sentences, sentences a person, and as part of that sentence and/or plea agreement, they, they're removed from office, that'd be the second way. There's an Indiana statute, it's IC thirty-six, four, six, six. If a public official is in violation of an official act, that, that official act is a term of art that the attorney general has issued some opinions on. An official act would be where, let's say we, an elected official refused to comply on, on a continuing basis to comply with the Indiana Open Door Act, or if the, somebody misappropriated money, they, they have to act in their official capacity, and that, that clearly did not happen here. The fourth way is there's some precedence under Indiana law where a county prosecutor can initiate an impeachment proceeding. I don't think that's gonna happen. I imagine that the prosecutor would say, this is a Beach Grove issue and we should handle it. So the short answer is, is that unless Mr. Mobley resigns his position, he can serve out his term. If he decides to run for reelection, that's up to the voters. Moving forward, the council could decide down the road to act, enact a, a code of conduct that could address this type of situation, but absent that, Mr. Mobley can serve out his term.
Can the council do a resolution asking him to step down?
They could do that, but it, it, it has practically no legal impact.
Except that it would show a vote of confidence that the council didn't want him.
That's correct.
But does he have to comply? I mean.
Comply with what?
If we enacted a resolution.
Well, the resolution would essentially say, we don't approve of the conduct, and we would request that you resign or something along those lines. Again, it would have no legal impact.
The thing is, Kathy, if you had six people telling you they didn't wanna work with you.
Right.
I mean, I'd go, I'd leave.
I would.
Of course, I'd have left two years ago.
I, I, I know, I hear you. But I guess then what happens to that seat?
Well, that's up to the Democratic Party. Essentially, it would be filled by the precinct committee, like any other vacancy that'd be created.
And I guess you can't just do a referendum, like, public, like.
Yeah, that would be, that's.
Out of.
Have a special election, no.
Okay, well, I don't condone behavior, I won't put that on record.
Any other comments from council members? All right, start to my left, council comments.
I'd like to thank everybody that showed up for the swish for Rish, who was a fundraiser for a Beach Grove student, a young high school student. I don't wanna say suddenly passed away because he'd been stricken with an illness, but Friday he was at school and was in good humor and did not survive the weekend. So it was a beautiful fundraiser for him. Not so much the money that was raised, but the show of support from the Beach Grove students was a great show of support, it was wonderful, wonderful thing to witness, it was all handled by the Beach Grove students, and every decision that was made was made by the students, and they asked the parents and the staff to help. They put the whole thing together, they did a great job. They had a basketball game, the seniors versus the staff, it was a very close game, the staff ended up winning on a controversial call, but that's just me. I'd like to thank everybody that showed up and made it a success. The money is not going to make anybody feel better, but it was a great show of support from the Beach Grove students for a classmate, so it was very classy. That's all I have. Thank you, congratulations to all the sports people that work for the high school students that were up here.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, appreciate your input. And just to add, if you haven't been down to Beach Grove Little League, then you're really missing out on something. You need to go down there and buy a hot dog or hamburger, it's, they're actually really good. And while you're down there, I might add, I have a six-year-old grandson that plays on, in the Reds rookies, and his coach is my son, Anthony Davidson. And folks, if you haven't seen Anthony's boy play, you are in for a treat. He hit a ball, now, this is a seven-year-old, he hit a ball that come within ten feet of the fence Saturday.
Yep.
And for whatever reason, he hit it so far, he stopped on first base with everybody telling him to go to second or third, and, but he didn't, I mean, he cracked that ball. And he had three good hits, and that little boy is something to see. That's all I gotta say.
Where'd he get it?
He didn't get it from me. I wasn't a very good baseball player, no, but I, I played, but I wasn't as good as, as he is right now, for sure. No, I appreciate that, Dave. Yeah, I, I would agree with Dave. I'm a fan of the ribeye sandwiches, so if you get down there, you know, it's something, something to see. I'd like to thank everybody also that took part in the Little League Parade. I think it went by pretty smooth, I didn't see any problems with it, lots of candy being tossed. And also, I'd like to thank our animal control officer, Steve Durbin, and Chief Schwartz for sitting down the other day and going over the animal code and making sure that I have, that, that we have everything in there to give Steve the tools necessary to do his job. So I appreciate that. That's it. Oh, and get out tomorrow and vote.
Well, thank you for coming. I have a good case before I forget. We've had, as you can see, we've had a lot on our plate. As council president, I've had some responsibilities thrown to me that is awful heart, but Councilman Davidson herself has hired a attorney to do an investigation. I can't report anything as yet. This is going on in Clerk Tracy's office. The other thing, we have a concern, the mail that comes into the Clerk Tracy's office, if it's part personal, needs to be personal. We're messing with federal law here. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Kathy?
Oh, gosh, everybody said everything, but I think, you know, looking from the six-year-olds in the Little League all the way up to the high school students that were here, that we've got a great youth in Beach Grove and a good future. Thank you to the police and fire for their contribution to our safety, and congratulations on your week of recognition, and, and every day you should be recognized for everything that you do, and, and much appreciated. And thanks to everyone who came out today, and keep calling me, I do listen. You might not think so, but I do.
A couple of things, May the twenty-fourth is the Memorial Day service in the city park at eleven a.m. We would encourage those of you to come out, it's a nice ceremony. At the next meeting, council, June the second, you'll hear a presentation from the Beach Grove Middle School Recycling Committee. They would like to talk to you about recycling in the city of Beach Grove, so I've been working with them a little bit, and I think it will be really good and productive. And tonight, you passed General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand and fourteen, establishing stormwater rates for the city of Beach Grove, and I applaud you for that. And whoever the mayor and council is, five to ten years from now, will thank you because you did good work tonight, and I am very grateful. So now we can begin tackling stormwater issues throughout Beach Grove, so I applaud your actions this evening. A motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'd like to address Councilor Bell's comments. This is the second time that slanderous accusations by Councilor Bell has been made towards me, me and my office both, without doing any investigation that would include a statement from me or my administrative assistant. Councilor Bell is aware that in accordance with state statute, I cannot release employee records unless they have been on the disciplinary track and received at least three days off. I will be seeking legal counsel to address Councilor Bell's behavior and comments, and then this evening, just now, he made accusations that I'm opening personal mail, which I am not. The letter that you received and the one for Councilor Davidson is still in his box. I never tampered with anything, and I hate the fact that you're making accusations like that that are untrue and unstantiated. So anyway, I just wanna make that on the record.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-three p.m. Thank you very much.